This meeting is ordered. It is a 10 o'clock work session, but we're going to change the, change it around just a little bit. The, if you would please, I'd like to ask for a moment of prayer and preach a great long, would you please? Do anything.
By our head. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, it's one more time, God, that we, by our unworthy heads, Lord, before you, God, thanking you for this day, Lord, thanking you for each one in this room. And, Father, we'd ask you, oh, Lord, that you'd look down upon each one, Father, that's, Lord, that's in our county. Lord, we're thankful for it, God, we're thankful for our little town. Lord, we're thankful, God, for our folks that we've put out here to lead us, God, and help us. Lord, we've got a lot of confidence in them, Lord, and just to be honest with you, Lord, we love them and we appreciate their friendship. God, we appreciate what they do. And, Lord, we'd ask you, God, that you'd look down upon, Lord, our county employees. Father, we pray, God, that you'd look down upon them, Lord, and bless them and their families. Father, we ask you, Lord, for good health, Father, knowing that there's sickness going around. Lord, we'd ask, God, that you'd take care of our law enforcement officers, Lord, that's out here every day, Father, protecting us, and, Father, most of all, protecting our children. Lord, we'd ask you, take our educators, Lord, and the folks that's in charge of that education, Father, that they would, Lord, seek thy guidance. Lord, not only them, God, but our commissioners, Lord, and our police department, Father, we beg you, Lord, that you'd just guide them. Father, we know and realize all don't believe in you, but, Father, I do, and, Lord, my faith strong. And, Father, I'd ask you, oh, God, Lord, just look down, Lord, in love, and upon this country, Lord, in this land that we live in. Lord, we realize that there's many out there, God, that's forsaken you, but, Father, Lord, I beg you, Lord, and I thank you, Lord, for even the thought, God, of prayer, Lord, before one of our meetings here in this place. Lord, continue to bless our little community, Lord, continue to bless our children, all of them, Father, no matter what they may be involved in. And, Father, we beg you, oh, God, Lord, keep the evil out of our schools. Lord, we know we've had a little trouble this year, but, God, I beg you, Lord, that you give these children a little resistance, God, to fend off, Lord, that that's come into our communities. Lord, for it's in thy sweet and holy name, Lord, we do beg.
Amen.
Amen.
And while we're standing, please, if you would, I'd like to have the officers of the FFA of Pickens County, Hines, to direct us into blessed allegiance this morning.
Blessed allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. All right, before we get to the, to the main agenda, we're going to do a recognition this time, and, you want to try to bring them all up here at one time? We'd like to ask the FFA officers if they would line up here out front. We have a, we have an award we'd like to present.
Yes, yeah.
If I may please, I'd like to read this proclamation. Pickens County, Georgia, Board of Commissioners, the proclamation to recognize leadership excellence by the Pickens High School FFA chapter. My voice will hold out. Whereas agricultural education programs like the Future Farmers of America provide a strong foundation for youth of Pickens County, and whereas the FFA program teaches citizenship, stewardship, and leadership to ensure that future generations of Pickens County will have an adequate food, fiber, and natural resources system, and whereas the FFA motto of learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve, gives direction and purpose to students who participate and take an active role, excuse me, in succeeding in agricultural education. And whereas the Pickens High School FFA chapter is under the direction of advisors Jason Cantrell and Cassidy Bies, and the officer team leadership of President Andy Branell, Vice President Taylor Dawson, Secretary Tyler Westbrook, Treasurer Emma Long, Reporter Shelby Stevenson, Sentinel Skyler Knoll, Chaplain Madeline Elrod, and Assistant Parker Fleming, Pendleton Popgood, and Chase White. Now, therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Pickens County, Georgia, hereby recognizes the Pickens High School FFA chapter and the 2018, 2019 Officer Team and Advisor for Leadership Excellence and commends them for a job well done. Excuse me, be it further resolved that Thursday, February 7th, 27, 2019, is proclaimed Pickens High School FFA Leadership Day, and that the clerk is directed, excuse me, and that the clerk is directed to provide a copy of this proclamation to the chapter and witness for this occasion by the Board of Commissioners and the City of Jasper, Pickens County on the 7th of February, 2019. I'm going to give this to the President of the FFA chapter.
If we could get them lined together for picture, Jerry, you and Becky and Rob, I think we'll need two lines, don't you?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Mr. Barnes, we'd like to make these presentations here, and I want y'all to come up one at a time if we call your name. President Andy Branell. Vice President Taylor Dawson. Treasurer Emma Long. Reporter Shelby Stevenson. Sentinel Skyler Knoll. Assistant Parker Fleming. Assistant Pendleton Popgood. And another Assistant Chase White. Now, this time huddled up here, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jerry Barnes also.
All right. We've got something up here for the last year's state poultry judging tape. Just come up here. Initially, they say, coming where they've, where they've won the state contest, now that's, and we've got one here that won the national contest, Ms. Emma Long.
Well, I guess that turns back over to us one more time. Emma, I don't know what your, how much you meant, bench press, but, we'll find that here in a minute. The Pickens County Board of Commissioners is honored to recognize this, Emma Long, National FFA Talent Winner, for her outstanding accomplishments and the pride she has brought to her community. Well, thank you, I'm sorry again, we won't thank you very much for what you've done, and the way you have represented Pickens County.
Thank you.
Dad to tote that out.
Can we get a picture of the poultry winners and Emma with you commissioners Becky?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get started here on department updates. Keep it quick. Kim, go ahead.
First of all, we activated our four-way stop down the water crossroads in Little Creek Drive on January 22nd. Everything went well, and it seems to be working well. We've had all possible response from the public, and, you know, I think it's created a lot safer condition there.
Did we get the other blinking light fixed? Only had one out that they might come check out.
Yeah, we got, I think we got that correct.
Okay.
Also, we're looking at all of our roads right now on our 2019 paving list. We've got some drainage pipes ordered that we're going to have to replace, and we're looking for, you know, any issues that might come up before we pave, like trees that need to be removed, or tree roots in the road, or anything like that, any kind of issue that we might need to address when we pave those roads. And I guess most of y'all have heard, have heard, we've temporarily stopped taking motor oil at the road department, but we are working on putting a new system in place, which will be done at the recycling center, and we hope to have that done in about 30 days.
Give them an update on that. The, we have, over the last 30 years, have accepted motor oil and antifreeze up at the old area upstairs. We were in the process of moving all that anyway downstairs, down to the covered pavilion that we have for, for recycling. What's, what's happening there is we're putting two 500 gallon tanks in place, one for motor oil and one for antifreeze for the convenience of the citizens of Pickens County. That's why this tank was left up there for the last 30 years or better. We've had one complaint, and so we have acted on that complaint to resolve the issue. It's going to be a little convenient, inconvenient for the citizens until we get this other system up and going, but we'll work a diligently making that happen.
Yeah, hopefully within about 30 days. We've also had to repour a pad down at the gas pump. We were having some problems with our leak detection system and a couple of other things, so we've had to repour the pad, and the gas pump's still operational, I mean, you just have to use the opposite side, but we hope to have all that completed next week, hopefully by mid or late week.
And we will, as soon as this new pad dries, which is going to take about two weeks, or one is lit, it kind of stays out for two weeks, so once we get that side of the pumps up and going, then we're going to go ahead and repour the other side that's been broken, broken two or three different places, so kind of get that place. And we're looking at upgrading the pumps, if I may. We're having some issues, not really big issues, but it's taken too long to pump diesel fuel into some of the bigger trucks. Could take as much as 25 to 30 minutes, so we are going, since the pump is about 21 years old, we're going to revamp that pump with a bigger, bigger equipment where we can fill the tank in less than half the time with a bigger, bigger nozzle, so that's fixing to come on the pass here, and hopefully in about 30 to 45 days.
Right. The last thing, our brine and pretreating operation went well last week. Everything went real smooth. I'd like to thank Commissioner Johnny Phillips, everybody in the road and motor department. Everything went, went well, and everybody put a lot of hard work into it.
And let's, let's, Commissioner, so we had a critique yesterday, when yesterday morning we did a critique, had brought everybody in, the water and road department, to see if we had any issues, what we could do better, what we needed to change. Had about an hour meeting, and it was all the water and road employees that was in the brine, and when we're doing the brining, where we eventually get it tweaked in where it'll run itself, but it went, believe it or not, it went without a hitch, and we were well pleased with that. Thank y'all for prepping, Philip, Kim, Johnny, for that, making that go the smoother that did, but thank y'all. Is that all you got? That's about all we got. All right. Ms. Paula?
During another January, we had one workers' comp claim, and there's no loss of time on it, and we're still having one out in the fire, and there's no employee awards, service awards for the month of February, and we've been working on updating the handbook, the employee handbook, and I'm sending it to Joe Walker, he's got some liability people that look it over before we do it, and I'll be sending a copy of it to, to the board, to y'all, to review before we go forward with it. About got that, lady. And just been working on the retirement census for the, so that we can get the statements done.
All right. Ms. Karen, you got anything?
Well, everything, it had a deadline for January 31st, it's been done, W2s are out. The, I think all the department heads know about the change with the director cause that we're not doing that anymore email. They have to, employees either have to come to HR, payroll, and show identification.
Just want to put a bug in, Ms. Harvey's not here today, she is out sick with the, that bronchitis feeling today, so she is actually going to the doctor, so she wasn't doing well this morning, nor do we want her in here spreading the bug around, but that's fine. Thank you, Karen and Paula, for filling for that. Mr. Dawson?
We're updating, we're updating the digest for this year. Good response from the public coming in on their personal property returns, home state exemptions, change of ownership, new flats of surveys, so it seems like everybody is learning how the systems work. The website's still working extremely well for educating people and telling them what to do, so we're just busy, we're out in the field picking up things, and the public has really been helping us out this year.
All right, thank you. Mr. Nicholson?
Well, Kim and I are working on a new L-MIG for striping project. We are sending in the preliminary paperwork next Friday. We have to have it finished by March the 20th. That's another avenue of revenue for us. Since the Super Bowl's over and everything's back somewhat to normal in Atlanta, we finally are no longer playing phone tag with Jima on the last of Superstorm Irma. We've got that paperwork filled out, and it'll go in the mail today, so hopefully your checks will show up about the first of March. But that was the last little bit, but everything had been so involved with the Super Bowl and all that stuff, and it was hard to get through to anybody at Jima. But it's done, and it'll go out in the mail today.
Thank you, sir. Doug?
Not much going on right now, just got a couple of projects that I'm, just started working on, getting some things together, and I'll get more in detail with them later on, but I've just started putting some stuff together and trying to get some numbers together for that. I did speak with our communications guy, our telemetrics guy, Monday, that, well, our communications for our tanks and pumps, and he advised me that at the end of this year, our, our systems are on 2G, they're cellular devices, and that will be no longer available, and we're going to have to upgrade to 4G, which is better for us because of part of our locations, the elevation differences is, the signals ain't as strong. So, over the next month or so, we're going to be working on upgrading all of our telemetrics at our tanks and pumps, and going to the new 4G system.
You got any idea what the cost is going to be for that upgrade?
Yeah, it's $250 a unit, and he's just going to charge a fee to come out and change them over, and we've got, I think, 14 units that we have to change. So, we're looking at probably around $3,500 to change them all, them coming to change them all, and he can do it all in one day.
Okay.
So, and, and we could do it, but we have to call the, the place in Nashville, and they, they have to set them up and all that, so I'll just let him do everything. He can call and get everything set up, walked over. It's just as easy to let him do it, that's all he does, so, but other than that, that's about it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Elrod?
The two pummers that came in, the new pummers that came in that we got through sploons, I'm still working on trying to file eyes, getting their quarter put on, and getting them lettered. As soon as we do that, we'll call the progress and, everybody and get it out. One, one of the MIG units has gone for remount to tailor-made, so as soon as that gets done, we'll, we'll send the other one off. The Moss Road Station, or the Carlin Road Station, but the Moss Station, it's all but done. As far as the inside, it's pretty much done. If anybody would like to go out, just tolerate me, I've got.
Are you going to, are you going to drop enough to, put it, finish getting the gravel all around the outside, you think?
That's, that's the big thing we're waiting on now, as soon as we can get the gravel around through there.
We hadn't had any rain in the last 20 minutes.
Right.
Right.
We are putting on a volunteer class with the Wildcat Community Group and some other volunteers. We're putting on a volunteer firefighter class now. That's going very well. We actually have about 20 folks in it, between other station volunteers and the Wildcat Community. The IGA has been done with Dawson County, which I think everybody's pretty much heard, maybe about that, but other than that, I think.
And we're, we're in the process of working on automatic aid agreement. We've got some, we've still got some more tweaking in on that one, that could take a little while before that, if that comes to fruition. Anything else you got? Chief?
That's it.
Gentlemen, Rec Department?
Yes, we are currently, are still in registration for baseball, softball, and T-ball. Early registration will end on February 24th, and then we'll have a late registration period from the 25th to the 28th. Then after that, we'll start doing skills evaluation, picking teams, and then we'll start practicing about the second week in March, and then we're in baseball season until May. Other than that, finish up with basketball season. Still have pickleball going on pretty much five days a week, sometimes they even play on Sundays, so it is, it is staying busy there.
Okay. All right. Sheriff, I didn't see you back there until a few minutes ago. Have you guys seen that data song?
Not really. Things are actually going pretty well. Lightened down just a little bit, so said keep it short, so. That'll be my update for the night. Seen that two offices.
Well, thank you very much. Oh, we got the progress office back there, I see her sitting next to me.
No, it changed it up.
All right. Deputy Yager, you got?
Well, I mean, you had it open discussion at the end, I'll hold what I've got to the end.
Okay, fine. We'll, we'll get there then.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for the updates, that, thanks for that. We're going to go to number two, the audio visual for the courthouse. To give, to give the crew here an update on the audio visual, I have been in conversation with Fannin County and Gilmer County over the, the audio visual that we're dealing with, with the, with the courthouses. The overall goal was to, whatever we did in Pickens County, I would like to mirror what can be done in Gilmer and Fannin, where the judges would have the same equipment in all three counties, toward it be less confusing to operate all this electronic equipment from one county to the next. We've had, Mitch, you can help me with this, I guess, we've had two or three entities come into Pickens County Courthouse.
Just entities.
And we're still waiting on a, on a bid from another one, and they want to do, they're bidding on all three, on all three courthouses. We're trying to come down to some sort of conclusion on that, and get a bottom line price for each county as we go forward. You got any other comments to that, other than?
Other than it needs fixing.
Yeah, it's not only the overhead projection, but it's the, the headphone scenario for individuals that have harder hearing, those type of issues that we're having with, we would like to come to some sort of resolution on that, get their things, get them underway to get them corrected as we go forward with these courthouses. But other than that, I don't have, at this time, we have, get together with the other two individuals, or the other two counties, we'll be bringing that, don't have, don't have a price, don't even have any estimates at this time to that point there. Any, any questions to that? All right, that brings us down to item number three on Old Grandview Road closure. Mr. Landham, I'm going to turn it over to you.
We've had a request from Salvation Army to close the section of the road that goes between both sides of their, of their camp there. And just lots of direction from y'all, if, if that's acceptable, we'll set a time, you know, we have to, we have to run, run the legal ad, and then we'll have a, a public hearing like we'd have on the other days.
And to give them, give, give these two commissioners a heads up, we've already did a traffic study.
Yeah, we've done a traffic study, we've gotten the survey, all that ready.
How much, what's the distance of the road?
I'm not sure.
It wasn't, wasn't quite that much. The, the, they would like to shut the road down where it splits the Salvation Army camp from one side to the other, where the, where they would have, number one, they would have security.
A through road.
A through, yeah, but they would have, they got a security issue about the kids, you know, and then they also got a, got a issue about traffic going through there, and heaven forbid hitting, hitting some of these children running across the road, but there is other ideas that can't be done, but they have requested a, a hearing to that effect to, to bring their concerns to the, to the public, I guess.
Would it affect any other homes, anybody getting to their property?
The, the traffic study shows that it, it is used by, by residents, and of course, we would run the legal ad, we would post it on either side of the road, and they would be, they would be able to come in and touch by ads to their use at that point. And again, we're not, we're not really.
Advocating.
We're not, we're not advocating any way as wrong, so, but we're also not really closing the road, even though we, we kind of use that language, what you're really doing is voting to take it off of the county maintenance schedule, just really abandoning it. It doesn't stop, it doesn't shut it down to third parties' usage of it, it just does the counties. Your, your threshold is, is the public server by the expenditure of public funds by the continued maintenance of this, or is it, or is it not?
Is that the same as Fortner Road, the same situation that we had with Fortner, where we just abandoned?
Right, right.
Okay.
We, we had, the one up there were Joey Lyles' property owners.
Do we still own the road, even though we're just not maintaining it, or what happens?
On, on those that we did in December, was, part of that vote was for the county, mechanical sign, quick plant deeds, which can, will convey that road bed to the other, to the contiguous landowners, and, and like on the one where it went, the portion that went through the Lyles family's factory, it would go just to them, but portion that's up on the road, it would go to the, Mr. Johnson, and, and the Lyles on that. And in this case, if I did vote to banning it to be a quick plant deed to the Salvation Army, it's not a warranty of title, we're just giving up our rights to it.
It isn't?
It, it was to the normal.
Yeah.
But it didn't, but I guess what I'm asking about is direction as far as, but setting that, setting that hearing down.
I guess we go ahead and have the public hear in and proceed in that direction, is what I would say.
We're, I'll follow, I'll give a broadening, and then we'll follow up with y'all next in days. Probably would be better to do it in the evening, so that more people will be able to come after this, so don't, don't worry about it. And maybe that we could, I don't know that we've got enough time advertising wise to do it before your next meeting, but I will look for that and see if we can, remember someone we could have to do.
I think it was two weeks ahead.
I think it was two.
I think so. I think it is two weeks, be sure you, you cover ourselves, everybody gets notified.
Maybe we can do it on a night, we all got something else.
All right, any, any further questions for that? Okay. That brings us down to item number four, under an animal control email. Ms. Denny has sent this to me, and Jerry, on, in regard to this, you want to speak on this, Ms. Denny?
Well, should we just read this and let Phil give us some direction, or what's your thoughts on that?
Well, I think, I think what we, probably my, my thought was be just to let Phil have a copy of this, let him go through it. What a lot of people are going to have to understand is, we are a county, not a city, and we are still classified as a rural community now, even though being a rural community doesn't give the, the citizens thereof the ability to be cruel to their animals, and I see, I see what they're saying here. The, but then again, you know, I've, I've heard the statement brought about leash laws and all that, that could be something, you know, we've dealt with the leash law issue many times in the past. The way we've been handling it, if you happen to move into a neighborhood that's got covenants, they can handle it through that. The issue you have is trying to enforce it, and, and trying to run it down. We don't have the staff, nor the, nor the vehicles and staff and everybody else to run around, you know, checking this out, unless we use customers' complaints to go out and do that, and they want to put their name on the bottom line. do that and they wanna put their name on the bottom line. On the other hand, when we go out and check, that's a decision that has to be made between either the animal control officer, sheriff's department, or magistrate judge. So that's, I'm gonna make a recommendation, we're not gonna vote on it, but I would think we need to let Mr. Landham look at it and, and go through it and, 'cause we have, and then of course, we can let, of course Rodney's over planning and development now, he needs to be part of this, let him pull up the ordinances to see if anything could be done, 'cause we have, we have dealt with this before. We have got some issues that are coming up on aggressive dogs that was ruled by the courts a few years ago and through public health, that we could have a, possibly could have an issue coming up in the near future. We might, and an aggressive dog scenario is a little bit different than the leash law and all, but, but those items will have to get to us as they come up.
Is this how it stands now, where he says, as long as tie-out is at least six feet long, dog has access to food and water and can get out of the rain or sun and it's okay? Is that how we stand right now, is that?
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
That's my understanding of it and it's.
And then on barking, he's saying that, let's see, animal control says if not barking twenty-four seven, then it's not against the county ordinance.
That falls into a nuisance concept. Me and the, me and the sheriff worked on that years ago, 'cause then what, what you run into is not the, not the barking or the mooing of the cows or the waying of horses, it's the, it's the decibel level of which, of what they're doing that. And that's where you get the, that's where you have the issue, is the, is the amount of sound.
And not enough to look, look at that and really, you know, the expense of a decibel meter or the, or the use of it. And then the, the deputies that go out there, the dog was barking when the, you know, when, when phone call was made, it's not barking anymore, it's, it's a different dog barking. There's some, there are some enforcement issues that are trying to get around.
If you can just let me know, then I'll get back to handling that.
Well, we're, we're looking at it and, any other questions on that? All right, and that brings us down to general discussion. Normally these work sessions are open for the employees of the county to ask any questions or any concerns they might have. Okay. Please.
And it, and I'll give you a copy of this. In, in this little background, yesterday, we had a bailiff at courthouse actually retired for medical reasons, Jim Gorder, and, and I was hoping for the opportunity to try to find somebody else. And, and the deputy that Jim Adams had retired years ago with the county had mentioned he'd like to be a bailiff. So I went through the process and talked to our HR, Sandy, and she said, well, if he's drawn to retirement, he can no longer work part-time for the county. And so I had a meeting with Ms. Peace yesterday and she gave me this, and it's my understanding since twenty sixteen, when y'all switched to the new gift court. Somewhere, and I'm, I'm afraid it's got far-reaching aspects, that's unintentional consequences because the way I understand and the way she understands now, if you draw a county retirement check from the county, you can no longer work part-time subcontract anywhere in the future. So I mean, you know, by this, anybody in the county that, that's county retiree twenty years ago, that's drawing the check from the county, he can't be a bailiff, he can't, you know, anything. And second part of that, it's my understanding Jerry Walker, if I know him, he's been working thirty-five years for the county. And with this same gift court system, he can't retire without getting penalized till he's sixty-five. It, it's a crazy, I mean, if he retires when he's fifty-nine, he's gonna get penalized. And his retirement plan is, you know, his thought was he's gonna be, uh, work with the coroner, which he does part-time now. But as it stands now with this new retirement thing, if he does retire, draws a county retirement, he can't even do the coroner work.
Yeah. The, uh, we have talked to Jerry a time or two, Fay was working to the fact of, as we have talked many times, majority of these people sitting here, I've talked about the fact of having a thirty-year, a thirty-year retirement policy, so after thirty years you can retire if you wanted to to work on.
Right, and that would be smart as a taxpayer.
And the state, state does that and, and all that, that is true, state does that. Fay, Fay and the, and the retirement company was looking at a, there is a cost and, and...
But it would be offset by what a thirty-year employee makes at his salary, getting him out of the system and hiring a younger.
Yeah.
At bottom level. I mean, I dealt with the state, and I ain't gotta duck and fight, I mean, I won't get a county retirement, you know, I'm on the new, new, new plan. So if I'm just food for thought, that's what I found out, I don't, I don't think it's really right.
And Fay and a few of them are looking at, at the thirty-year type scenario.
Right.
And see if we can come up with some sort of solution on that. I talked to Jerry here a few months ago, Fay was trying to come up. So they're, they're still having conversation with gift court. As for the retirement thing, we, we, we had this conversation, what, three years ago?
Well, they actually started that new form, I think, February of last year, and, and they won't even process a retirement now without that form signed by the employee and the employer. And at that time, they sent us a bunch of different letters and stuff, kind of explaining it. It's got to do with bona fide terminations, which...
I don't, I don't know that it's an option. I mean, I think that's a risk.
It is, it is something to do with IRS laws.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that it's something we can, we can modify our plans to accommodate, I may be wrong about that.
So regardless of the retirement system you're under?
Don't we have a couple of people that have retired and are working part-time?
Yes, and there's Larry Coleman was one of them, and that was, that was one that we specifically looked at. And it, and I can't remember the details of it. But it had something to do, his status under a former plan. But don't, I, I may be wrong about it being part of a, of an ARISA action, but we can, we can sort of give a gift court and see if it's an option to, to do, or if it's something that, I know some other clients that I have have the same issue.
Yeah. You got, you got other clients that got the same issue?
Yeah, they, they, they won't allow it to part-time. But, Donnie, did you?
Donnie, you got something?
No, my question was, does it matter which retirement plan that you retire under, or is it just if you're under the new retirement plan?
I, I think it does, and I think that's why Larry had a different status.
'Cause I mean, I know people like Jim Adams, he, he probably would make more money under coming back to work as a bailiff, which is nearly nothing compared to what he's getting on retirement.
Another thing, though, it may be that he has the ability to suspend his retirement for that period of an even form as well. And in a situation like what you're talking about, that may be what he would want to do. I don't, I don't, I'm not familiar enough with the plan. But again, it's something we could sit down with gift court and just see what options are.
Paula, let's, of course, let's be sure, I'd like to have Fay here, let her get back healthy again, let's get Fay, let's see if we can get a gift court representative. And whoever you talk to there, tell them that we want to discuss this. And, and I'd like to have Fay Alton, that's, deals, has dealt with this stuff in the past in the other company he was at. And let's get him, let's get him in here, let's get to the bottom of it again. Last time we dealt with it was three years ago, and I thought we had it laid to rest at a point, other than, other than Jerry Walker's issue, trying to, trying to reiterate, you know, having thirty years of service. I'd still like to come to some sort of fruition on that. We need to keep pushing this thing along and, and see if we can come to some sort of conclusion. All right. Sheriff, would you like to sit in on that conversation?
Absolutely.
And we'd like to just work it out, get, get with County Commissioner Landham, Sheriff Craig, and, 'cause those two, especially, especially the sheriff and all, and us have got most employees, we, you know, get something for the majority, would need, would need work, so he can pull something together.
Yeah, I'll see what I can get set up, because when I even asked about it, they always, you know, consult with their legal team, so, you know, it, it does need to be them.
Are they gonna bring, have they got a legal team they wanna bring in here?
They have a legal team, don't know about, I, I'll find out.
I mean, I'd like to find that, I've been, we've kicked this thing around, is it IRS laws, is it not IRS laws, is it an insurance company doing this? We need, we need to find out for sure how we can proceed on with these, everything has changed, especially with the federal government the last four to six years, so we need to, need to see what, what we're doing as we go forward. You can pull that off, I appreciate it. Keep, keep the sheriff involved in Mr. Landham and the other two commissioners here. All right, any other, any other discussion? Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'll thank y'all very much. This meeting is now adjourned.